It is 6:47 and this is the January 2nd public hearing for the Kingston Planning Board. This evening, we've got a number of things going on, but before we do that, I'd like to introduce the people sitting at the table. To my left, to your right, is Rob Tersolo, who is a member. Peter Coffin is a member. My name is Lynn Merrill and the chair. Robin Carter is our land use administrator. Chris Bashar is our selectman rep. Peter Baiki is a member. And Robert Duquet is a vice chair of the board. Beside her, I know, I'm out of practice after being up for a month. And beside her is Glenn Greenwood, who is our town planner. So the first hearing tonight is for the Major Samhain Seminary LLC. This is a design review. So for those of you who may be in the audience and have not been through a design review before, let me just quickly explain what that's all about. A design review is an opportunity before a formal application is submitted for an applicant to come before the board and give us an idea of what they're working on, what they're in the process of, what their thinking is, and to gather feedback from us. So the first thing that will happen is the applicant will give their presentation. Once that is complete, the board will ask questions. We'll get some input from our town planner. If our town engineer were here this evening, he would also give input. From there, we have some input from some of our town departments. We'll also present that information so we get an idea of what the town as a whole is thinking about the project. Once that is completed, if there are no more questions from us, then we'll open it to public comment. If you wish to give some comment, you're certainly welcome to do so. When that happens, you'll need to sit at the end of the table. You'll need to give us your name and your address so that we have that for the record. And then feel free to offer any thoughts that you have. So if everyone, I think that covers everything. And so I understand, is it Paul Goodwin? Paul Goodwin is the project manager for Chinburg. And Paul, we'd love to have you come before the table and give us an idea of what this project is all about. We've heard lots of things about it over the last few years and it'll be nice to finally see what's going on. Thank you.
It's a pleasure to be here.
So is green.
It's a pleasure to be here and you're absolutely right. This project has been in the works for some time. And before I dive into sort of the plan, the current plan itself, I'll give you a little bit of the background on some of the work we've done to date. I believe we purchased the property in 2020 or 2021 from the SAU. The site includes the Swayze Gym, which is leased back to the SAU for recreational purposes. And that is integral to the plan being presented. We have worked with the HDC closely in devising this plan. We've had five working sessions with the HDC already over the course of last year. So this plan is closely informed from their feedback. The zone for the site is the historic District Zone 1, I think. And so a lot of the items that might ordinarily come under zoning review actually come under the HDC review. So getting their feedback and buy-in on the massing site plan was really critical. So we've been working closely with them. We're not, we haven't submitted formally, obviously, but we believe we're in a good position based on their feedback. We've hit a number of roadblocks in getting the project off the ground. I should say, we also have received 79 EBD, Community revitalization Tax Relief Incentive for the site, which closely mirrors the program that's presented or the expectation for the program for before you tonight. Through that, I believe we've committed to do 10% of the project as affordable at 80% AMI median area median income for working families to afford. And then, as I said, some obstacles, obviously interest rates being a big one that is prevailing in the market at general, at large. And then the other being some early miscalculations with our septic design, which required us to sort of go back to the drawing board and, you know, work with a different set of consultants to try and figure out how to get the site to work. And we have been working closely with the SAU to figure out how we can achieve the septic loading required here, which is likely to, which will require off-site rights, septic rights being purchased or leased for the benefit of the site. So that's sort of the general background of all the work that's been done. We're still having those conversations with the SAU to figure out the septic side of things, but we believe we have a path forward and wanted to get in front of you guys to start soliciting your specific feedback so we can start finalizing plans for submission later this year. So we're all familiar, the whole sort of plan in sight is really driven around the historic seminary building here. It is being proposed to be left, you know, in its current state, restored, you know, without major alteration. That is obviously iconic to the town. It's a historic, registered historic building. So we fully anticipate to restore that. And Chinburg has a deep expertise in adaptive reuse of historic structures. As you are probably well aware, we own, I believe, 16 different mill complexes throughout Vermont, Maine, and New Hampshire, and have done a lot of adaptive reuse of those using historic tax credits. We're not doing historic tax credits here, but we are very familiar with the scope of work that's required with that, which is regulated through the Department of the Interior and the National Park Service. And so we have an eye for historic restoration and intend to employ that eye with care on the seminary as that is so important to the site and really what attracted us to the site. Unfortunately, the seminary is not large enough to accommodate the amount of apartments required to make a project of its restoration feasible. We had originally anticipated to use the existing Science Building to be converted into apartments, and that for a number of reasons proved to be infeasible. And so we have progressed to essentially just taking down the Science Building and then largely in its footprint, constructing a new apartment building, which will appear, we'll get into the perspectives, but it's essentially a three-story apartment building and not have the balance of the apartment units to get the economy of scales we need in order to make the project financially feasible. Obviously, that amount of permits requires all-new septic systems, new well, and upgraded parking facilities, which are shown in the plan here. It is a little hard to see on the screen, but you can sort of see where we've put in the leach fields. These are diagrammatic. They are coordinated, but they're not final. And then working with the HDC, and we'll see this in the renderings, one of the things that we have talked about is really wanting to maintain/restore a campus-like feel to the site. There was a number of historic buildings that used to sit along Main Street or into the interior of the site that have been demolished over the years. And, you know, this being the town center, we thought it would be nice, the HDC, working with us, thought it would be nice to sort of re-engage the street with some structures. So we're proposing a total of five single-family homes. We've got four along Main Street here and one along Church Street. And benefit of that, again, is sort of restoring that campus-like feel and also sort of creating a visual screen along Main Street to kind of mask what is, you know, a larger-than-average building for the town in the center of the site. The landscaping here is largely diagrammatic, but I think I will point out the intent is certainly to try and keep, again, that campus-like feel, that historic tree-lined aesthetic that is so iconic to the site. So that would definitely be the intent, particularly along this main access. And we would anticipate, you know, keeping the site open to the public for, you know, walking and, you know, sort of community activities as they currently exist. And a part of that, as I had already mentioned, is keeping the gym, you know, for the SAU's use and town's use, you know, to the extent that the SAU coordinates that. So that is the site plan. Pop over to the perspectives here. So this is a view from Main Street looking towards the center of the campus here. So the Swayze Gym would probably be just a little off-screen behind this garage here. So this is showing sort of the reconstruction of that campus-like feel with the construction of these single families along the street. And you can see the existing seminary building here in a restored state. And then a new structure here, and this is that three-story apartment building. In terms of unit count, I should mention, we're anticipating about 15 apartments in the seminary and about 65 in the new structure for total, about 81-bedroom studio apartments. That number will vary a little bit depending on the final architectural design and septic loading. And we anticipate to have two-bedroom apartments. It's just for simplicity with the septic design, it's easier just to sort of do everything with one-bedrooms. And then at the end, we'll throw in two bedrooms and the unit count will drop. So right now, we're showing 80 total studio or one-bedroom apartments, which is realistically probably like 72 apartments in total because eventually we'll have two bedrooms in there that will drop that count down a bit. But again, that will vary a little depending on the final septic design. So anyways, this is the Main Street perspective. Again, another Main Street perspective. These are, again, largely diagrammatic in terms of landscape design. We are proposing to maintain the historic gates, the historic fence. I believe there are a number of large trees on the site that we will identify and protect. I can't remember exactly where we left up the HDC, but that was the conversation we had. Now looking on the Church Street perspective, the site currently has a grade change. And so this new building essentially follows the exact same footprint that existed with the school that was there previously, the Science Building, which had a walkout level on the lower level here. So there, from this elevation, it is a four-story building with apartments on the lower level. So it's three-story from Main Street, four-story from the back because of the grade change. And this is the perspective going up the view there. And then, you know, working with the HDC, talking about material and color palette. So these are some of the items that we've discussed with them. I would also point out that this building's sort of architectural vernacular is pulled from a historic building that was previously on the site. I think it was called Concorde Hall. Yeah. So, you know, this is sort of an homage to that building, which was nearby at one point in time. I think that is the meat of it. We're obviously excited to move this project forward. We've been putting a lot of work into it in the last two years or so and have finally, you know, found a way forward with the septic loading. So that was really a critical piece for us. So happy to hear your feedback and continue to move forward.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Question on the Quick question on the gymnasium. Is there a time offer that was, I thought, originally mentioned to the town that we could use it for so many years? Or does that have an end to that? Or how long are we going to be able to use that gymnasium for? Do you know anything on that?
I believe it's a five-year lease with the option to renew. From our perspective, we don't even want to own it. So we offered to sell back to the SAU and the SAU said, oh, thanks. So as long as the SAU wants to lease it is the answer.
Okay.
If the town or the SAU want to buy it back, I think we'd be open to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I hope that Boris Slavon has big plans.
So we did receive comment from, informal comment, from the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission does not meet until the 11th of January. But some of the comments that came through from Abby Nathan were that, from her personal knowledge of the area and from looking at these plans, she said that there will probably be comments and questions from the conservation about the wetland and stream buffer. She says she believes there's a verbal pool present as well. There's been some degradation to the buffer in the past by dumping of asphalt and school ground debris, but that may or may not be an issue at this point. And they've asked for a sidewalk if the plan moves forward. I think there'll be a considerable buffer hurdles to jump for this plan to be approved. So thoughts. So just be aware of the fact that we're looking to make sure that wetland buffer is in place. Any other comments?
Just a couple of comments. Thank you. Really happy to see this come forward. I know that there's been a lot of discussion over the time period about this. Paul, do you have any timeframe for the Science Building demolition?
Yeah, the Science Building demolition will need to occur by the end of this year. So I don't have a firm schedule now, but I would anticipate late summer to fall. We don't want to be doing it last minute. But it's also not a top priority for us at the moment. That reminds me that one of the other steps that we have done in the preceding two years is receive, working with the town to receive, invest in age grant money for the demolition of the Science Buildings. That money is specifically for municipalities to aid the development of housing by removing existing structures that, for whatever reason, are not compliant or would further advance the construction of big housing. So that grant money needs to be used by the end of 2024. So we will be adhering to that.
And the reason I'm asking is because they have been kind and not be heavy-handed with me about a timeframe. But I don't think that's going to go very far into 2024 before they start saying, Glenn, you need to tell me information. So we'll need to coordinate that.
Noted. Yep. I appreciate there are requirements there, so we will be mindful about that.
Perfect. Perfect. And understanding that you're working on the septic, that's an issue that is going to be very important to the planning board as well as determining what that exact final unit count is so that we can work out things like parking and whatnot. I do want to say, from the beginning, I was really happy that you were considering that addition of some single-family residences. I'm assuming this is all going to be condominiumized, so those units will be condominiumized. We're not talking about any subdivision activity here, correct?
Correct.
Happy to hear that. That will require that there be, you know, additional plans and supporting documentation that'll have to come in that application package.
Yep. My expectation and understanding is that we are assuming a condo association that would include the different entities as different members of the condos.
Sure. Sure. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Those are the comments that I wanted to talk about.
And the town attorneys will want to look at the condo docs when they're prepared.
Sure. Yep.
So that you're aware of that.
Is that a condition, typically a condition of approval?
So the early, earlier you keep working on that, it's fine. I know because of my profession, I was pleased to see that you're putting 10% aside for affordable housing. There were so many seniors in the area that are ready to leave their homes and are looking for downsizing into something affordable. But there's really been a great need in the community for that. So that was nice to see.
Yeah, I think, I know the town has just been eager to see plans come forward, so it's nice to see starting something because we'd hate for anyone to lose the opportunity. When this obviously went between the two communities of that belonging to the SAU to be voted upon, it was, the SAU's concern was that the seminary building, being on the National Historic Registry, was falling into continuous disrepair. But when the SAU had vacated the building, they lost all their grandfathering provisions to go back in there and use it as SAU offices or anything unless they brought it up to ADA compliance, which would have been millions and millions of dollars to just try and even use it as an office space. So it was important, you know, both at the time, the towns of Newton and Kingston both voted to allow the SAU to engage. And in particular, it sounds like, you know, the offer to go to your company is because of the specialization in restoring and maintaining historic buildings. But understanding that you needed to create a project that's, we get it, you're in the business of making money. But an opportunity to restore the seminary is, I think, a positive thing for the community.
I just had a quick question. On your plans, you show some shaded rectangular areas, two under the parking lot over on the north side, one between your new four-story building or three-story and the seminary building, and one over near Church Street. And are those related to septic fields or septic leach fields?
Shaded areas being like this one here.
Yes, and that one there and the two north.
Those are the diagrammatic leach fields.
Okay, thanks. I just couldn't find it on the legend, so.
Yep. So there's also these ones over here for the gym. And then each of the single-family homes have their own. One of the major issues we had was that early work, NHDS has gotten more rigorous in their regulations on septic design. And we were sort of caught up in that transition of policy. And there's additional coordination around nitrate plumes that make the site less efficient than it would have been under a different policy.
Just amazing that a campus that held 800 students can't supply 80 houses.
It is, yes.
Anyway, any other thoughts and comments? Seeing none, is there any, we'll close the section and open it to the public comment time of the hearing. If anyone would like to offer some public comments? Welcome. Push the button until it turns green.
Do I have to speak directly into this? So I'm Al Magnusson. I live right there. Okay, if you wanted to point that out. They keep going up right there. Okay, 10 Carded Street. My concern, my first concern about this, and I think everything looks nice. My, can I keep that up there? My first concern is I think everybody's probably seen the development at the High Street Portsmouth Ave intersection before you get down towards the hospital in Exeter. And it's a mess. And I'm worried that this is going to look tight and messy. It looks kind of spread out right there, but I'm just concerned about that being so compact. And those houses in there are, how many people are going to live in those houses?
They're single-family homes, so.
Single-family homes, so two to five.
And they're spaced at least as densely, probably less densely than the existing historic fabric directly next to them. So that is not that spacing, that's generally.
Okay. And so the Exeter concern, and if there's, so you're talking about eventually there's going to be 100 to 160 people living here. And I did conservative estimates on water use, and there's no water on that property right there. So I'm concerned where you're going to get a million gallons a year. It's got to come out of the ground and then go back into the ground. My calculations too high?
Yeah, I think your occupancy calculation is a little high. But one of the items that we are working with the SAU on would be locating a well. I mean, there is an existing well off-site that we have right to.
Yeah, that's my house, right beside my house. So what, is there anything protecting my well if that big well takes my well down? Do I come after you or the town?
Any new well would need to meet state regulations. So that would all be regulated by the state well placement, so.
No, but I'm saying that if that well goes into use, you're talking about the corner, the well at the corner of Chase Field.
That will, based on the current plan, that well is going to continue to serve the gym because that's what it currently means. And a new well will be created, not on the Chase Field site, most likely on the Baiki Field site.
Okay.
To service the rest of the property.
And then, if you take all that water out of the ground, you got to put it back into the ground as wastewater. And are those septic areas big enough to accommodate all of that?
Yes.
That's my other concern.
We are spending lots of money on very smart consultants to make sure that this is compliant with state regulations. And the state regulations have gotten more rigorous recently to ensure that treatment is high quality.
Alan, that's something that the planning board would be very involved in.
Yeah.
Alan, it will definitely.
Because you said something about, sorry, I interrupted, but something about working with the SAU to find an off-site for septic. Does that mean you're going to pump it over to Chase Field and take that over? Or are you going to go behind Baiki?
It's purely, purely right. All of the
Behind Baiki parcel.
I got it in my notes.
All of the, so all of, no, that's, I just want to clarify here. So all of the septic loading is going to be occurring on our property. So all of that fits on the property. The soil is being accommodated.
Yep.
It will, you know, meets all the regulatory requirements. For paper court purposes, we need essentially a larger land area for the calculations to work. So we need to buy, or at least somehow get right to a larger land area to meet the calculations work. So we'll be treating, you know, our septic systems here are going to be specifically designed to meet all the requirements within our footprint. And we will simply have paper rights at the Baiki, hopefully at the Baiki site, to meet our requirement for calculations. But there will be no wastewater pump off-site.
Okay. So my next thing is, and I'm not sure how many of you walked this property, but that middle house on Main Street, you're going to have to take down one of the most beautiful trees in town. And if you don't believe me, go walk underneath it. It's spectacular. It's a, I would call it a signature tree that should be maintained. It's beautiful. You walk underneath it, I mean, let's see, who went to school here? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Almost half the people here went to that school and may or may not have been near that tree. But that, the tree that's there is spectacular. And as an ecologist, conservationist, I think it should be kept there. So that's something else. You should walk underneath it. You look underneath it and you can't believe it. It's a New England specialty. Let's see. So somebody mentioned over here about the seminary building is falling down. I mean, it's got open windows in it. And I wish Chinburg had done a better job as far as maintaining and keeping that. The birds are flying in and out of it. And it's a mess over there. And I wish that you guys had done a better job at fixing the windows. This window is broken and wide open, and you guys have done pretty good with plywood. I'm the one that's helped the, the science building, because the kids were breaking into that, and that took a long time for Chinberg to respond to that, but eventually you did that. So I'd like to see the seminary building kind of, kind of cleaned up a little bit so that it looks nice when I walk around there. Thought I had one more thing. Mary, do I have one more thing on my list? I have one small thing. You put all those people there, there's going to be dogs, and I'm going to sit right on my backyard when those people come by, because you know that, that they're not going to clean up all that dog waste. They're going to have dog poop everywhere.
We, it's just to speak, I do anticipate there to be a fair amount of dogs. There tend to be more dogs than children in apartments these days, and we will be sure to, on a site this big, we'll have a specific area for a dog run, a fenced-in dog run with bags and dog lead areas.
Like a play area?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. That makes sense. I think that's it. Is that it, Mary?
Thank you very much for your comments. See any further comment? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, we will close, oh.
Hi, Tamara Harmer, 149 Main Street.
How's that? I just wanted to ask, I'm sure it's in the future developments, but the building will have ADA compliance and elevators?
Yes, so the, I think the trick here is, the nuance is that that is not a completely useful.
No, I know.
In this building, this building will absolutely have an elevator in each unit, so that the, the two buildings working together will have a compliant number of, of units for accessibility.
Good, because I just see our parents and us ending up there. Thanks.
Yes.
Any further comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comments section. Anything else on the board? Anything for us, Paul?
I'm glad this has been very informative, so we should give this time.
Thank you very much, thank you for comments, thank you for the presentation.
And we are going to have to work on that demolition thing.
Because when they get aggressive, they get really aggressive.
Yes, I have outside stories for you, but.
So next on our agenda is the last five of the proposed 2024 zoning warrant articles. The articles should be in front of us. We've narrowed it now down to just five left, we're getting through this. And the next. Is more math? Oh, that was in my paper. So what we're going to vote on tonight are five more warrant articles. The first one is in the preamble, and it has to do with the definition of family. And the new wording for the definition of family is, for the purposes of the Kingston Zoning Ordinance, the term "family" refers to those individuals that constitute the occupants of a single dwelling unit.
You need public comment on each one of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Need to open a public comment. But yes, justice, next, there's no definition at all.
Okay, any further comment here? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Okay, we've opened and closed public comment. I hear a motion from Peter Baiki to move this forward to the ballot, and it's getting promoted to get. And any further, no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that would be unanimous. Also, the next article is description and permitted uses in the historic district. Every building lot in Historic District 1 that has a dwelling or dwellings thereon shall not have more than one additional structure for use as permitted in accordance with Article 102.5.1. The only instance where two dwellings are allowed to be separate, in separate structures is when one of these is an accessory dwelling unit, ADU, approved to be in a standalone structure, i.e. garage, barn, carriage house, or other structure. See Article 206 for ADU definitions and requirements. Any further comment from the board? Seeing none from the board, do we have any public comment? Y'all good? Okay. Public comment has been opened, public comment is closed. Any further comment from the board? Seeing none, are you ready for a motion?
I'll move if we move Article 102, Historic District, Section 102. 102.5 Description and permitted uses, A Historic District 1, or 2, 102.5 A2 as amended to the ballot.
All those, are we second?
Third.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that passes. The third zoning article is in the commercial zone under permitted uses, Article 110 Commercial Zone C3, Section 110.3 permitted uses, letter O. Amend Article 110 Commercial Use District 3, Section 110.3 permitted uses O by adding warehouses. So it reads O wholesale businesses and warehouses. Any comment from the board? Seeing no comment from the board, open for public comment. Any comment from the public? No comment from the public, close public comment. Any comment from the board? Seeing no further comment from the board, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move Article 110 Commercial Zone C3, Section 110.3 permitted uses O, wholesale businesses and warehouses, 110.3 O to the ballot as amended.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Number four is the excessive, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, which is Section 206.4 ADU requirements, letter E. We want to amend that ordinance to read, "The size of the ADU shall not be smaller than 600 square feet. The maximum, maximum size of the ADU shall not exceed 50% of the size of the gross living area, aka GLA, heated or air-conditioned space, as defined in the town's tax, in the town's tax card, of a primary single-family dwelling. In cases where the ADU is attached to the existing home, internal renovations are not permitted to result in the new ADU being equal in size to the original dwelling unit. The single-family dwelling units that are smaller than 1,200 square feet are not permitted to create an accessory dwelling unit. The reason for this is that an accessory dwelling unit in a structure smaller than 1,200 square feet would not be more than 50% of the size of the existing structure and no longer deemed to be accessory, accessory to the primary unit. Accessory dwelling units located in a detached structure shall comply with these same size requirements." Comment from the board? Seeing no comment from the board, we'll open for public comment. Do we have any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment. Any further comment from the board? Seeing none, are you ready for a motion?
Make a motion to move Article 206 accessory dwelling unit ordinance, Section 206.4 ADU requirements E, to the ballot as amended.
Third.
Okay, any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the last article is multi-page. So I don't plan to read the entire, it is available online, it is available on our website, and has been available for some time for the public to read. But it's Article 2, 402. This article is completely replacing the current Article 402 for recreational campgrounds and camping. There are a few reasons for this. The first reason is that our, we were currently out of date with many of the definitions and uses of this. We also needed to cite where these could be located. So therefore, we've determined that recreational campgrounds and camping will be allowed in commercial zones 2 and 3 and the rural residential zone. They're also in this ordinance, land use, land sizes, so it can be, at least you have to have 10 acres or more to have to cite this. This will also contain new language, and all of this was written by town council, but new language, which says that these are seasonal only, and that residents that are camping in the campground will not become, while they're living in the campground, will not become Kingston residents. So, do we have any further discussion or comment on this ordinance? Oh, is it also available in C1? Yeah, so all the commercial zones will be C1, 2, and 3, and rural residential for this. So it has to be 10 acres or more in zones 1, 2, or 3. Is there any in zone 1?
Sorry, it's in zone 3.
Oh, in zone 3.
3, so we're only adding 1 and 2.
But we have to put it in, in as a use. So it's being added as a use.
Completely rewritten, for each of the commercial zones and rural residential.
10 acres. Still 10 acres. So yes, you could probably put one in your backyard.
And this, this proposal does include a number of amendments to a number of different sections, adding those permitted uses. But there, it's all going to be one question, so it's all going to pass or all going to fail.
Right.
In March.
If we can do it all as one motion?
Yes, yes, you can.
Yeah, we specifically did that way, so you didn't have stuff getting added that wasn't passed somewhere else.
Yeah, if this whole thing, if the full ordinance got tagged and all these little amendments got added, it'd just.
Yeah, then everything.
Be a mess.
Very confusing at that point.
So, that being said, do we have any further comment? We have no public, so we do not need to open for public comment? So we've opened public comment and we have closed public comment. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move to replace the existing Article 402 Campground Ordinance with an entirely new Article 402, recreational campgrounds and camping to the ballot. In addition, move the following articles to the ballot as amended. Article preamble 2, definitions B, definitions by adding new Section 21. Article 104 Rural Residential District, Section 104.4 permitted uses by adding new Section L. Article 108 Commercial Zone C1, Section 108.5 permitted uses by adding a new Section P. Article 109 Commercial Zone C2, Section 109.5 permitted uses by adding a new Section N. Article 110 Commercial Zone C3, Section 110.3 permitted uses by adding a new Section W. And Article 110 Commercial Zone C3, Section 110.3 permitted uses H by deleting campgrounds from 110.3H.
We have second?
Second.
So I do have one question on this that came to me today, and it was asked whether or not this article would now apply to current campgrounds. In particular, they were considering the residential requirement. Would that now apply to existing campgrounds?
I mean, I think that unless anyone had a pre-existing approved use that allowed residency requirements, which technically they don't, we're just making it clear that it doesn't establish residency, and that was on the advice of town council, because we had people staying at campgrounds then coming in to apply for town welfare benefits, that the town was then obligated to provide them, because they were applying for through the town of Kingston.
And that's an important distinction that Glenn has brought up before, is that pre-existing non-conforming uses. Have to be legal.
Yes.
Just haven't gotten away with it. Doesn't mean it's a pre, it, it, well, it's.
Yeah, just doing, just doing it without knowledge or approval does not mean it's automatically, you can continue doing it.
And the ordinance already said that the camping season is October 15th, or whatever date it was, and therefore, any use of those campgrounds outside of those dates wasn't legal.
So to my knowledge, there's no campgrounds that are authorized to have claim, use it to claim residency already.
It's just a question that came forward, I want to make sure that we had mentioned it. Okay, any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, Robin, for writing those up, it's so nice.
That made it very helpful.
Boy, went there easy, man.
That was not lost, though.
Well, it took us 45 minutes to get through the definition of family.
I'm sorry.
I did want to ask.
It's in there, it's in there.
It's in there, okay.
Yeah.
It's a thing that holds a family.
No, it doesn't say that.
Okay.
Sorry, where do these go?
So, we have a letter from GPI, which is Greenman Pedersen, Inc., on behalf of 266 Route 125 LLC, hereby requesting an extension of the timeframe for satisfaction of the conditions of approval for the subject project for one additional year to provide additional time that is needed to satisfy the conditions of approval. Specifically, we are requesting a waiver of the 45-day extension limit in the regulations, and B, a 12-month extension to February 28th, 2025. This board previously granted a one-year extension at the public hearing held on February 7th, 2023. That extension expires on February 28th, 2024. And for those of you at home who are not aware of this, this is the proposed warehouse development on the 125 on the Kingston-Brownwood line. Since our last request for an extension, the applicant has invested considerable, considerable time, effort, and money to make progress on the following items. One, two proposed drinking water wells on the site have been drilled and tested and have been given conditional final approval by the New Hampshire DES Drinking Water Bureau. In addition, the existing drinking water well has received the final approval by the New Hampshire DES Drinking Water Bureau for its expanded use. Two, septic system designs for all onsite septic systems have been prepared and have been reviewed and approved by the town's consultant. Those designs have since been submitted to the New Hampshire DES Subsurface Systems Bureau, where an initial, an initial review has been completed and comments issued. At the time of this letter, the comments are in the process of being addressed, and we anticipate final approval of all system designs in early 2024. Number three, we continue to make progress with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, NHDOT, regarding access to the site, and those discussions remain active and ongoing. The time extension that is being requested is necessary to ensure that all remaining matters can be completed appropriately. We thank you in advance for your consideration of this matter and look forward to discussing it further at your next available meeting. If you have any questions or need additional information, please feel free to contact either David Jordan, and we have his contact info, or Heather Montecamp, and we have her contact information. And sincerely, David Jordan.
I feel a couple of granting an extension, I mean, we grant numerous extensions for all sorts of reasons of much smaller scope and projects, and it's not like they've been doing nothing. And at the end of the day, they're still spending a tremendous amount of money to ensure they comply with the standards that we've ordered them to comply with. So as long as they're making end runs with DES, DOT, and actively working on it, I think this is completely appropriate to grant, grant the waiver as well as extend it to the time period requested.
I was going to say, I certainly agree with that. As a side comment, I noticed the comments on Item 3 are exactly the same as they were last year when they hoped to have it done by this, by a month ago, so.
The efficiency of government.
That only is disappointing to me in that progress isn't being made there, but I certainly am fine with an extension, because it's, it's, obviously it's something we'd prefer not to ask for, we'd prefer that they didn't have to ask for it, and we'd like to get the project moving, but. We'd prefer that they didn't have to ask for it, and we'd like to get the project moving, but... Yeah, you've already seconded, so I-
So I'll do that as a motion, if nobody else has any further comment. So I make a motion to grant a waiver of the 45-day extension limit, and grant them an extension to February 28th, 2025.
So I happened to be at a meeting with a totally different topic, of discussing the efficiency of New Hampshire DOT, and the fact that so many of their engineers have retired, and they've not been able to recruit enough to take over, and that those that are being recruited are pretty much new to the field and need supervision, so a lot of things have been backed up a lot of times. You know, for longer than what one would expect the timeframe to be. And we were also told at that meeting that because so many of the engineers are newer, sometimes some of the comments and things that are coming back go back and forth a little bit more, because they're not as well-accepted by the applicants, and it takes a little bit of negotiation to get past that, and to get that done. And the, and the intervention of more experienced engineers by DOT. So apparently, it's a, part of this is a situation that is out of the hands. From what, from that meeting that I happen to be sitting at, it appears that part of the situation may be out of the hands of the applicant. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
On the same note as the DOT question, have you heard anything on the 107 project?
No.
So, you know, just my call. What we talked about after the meeting.
Okay.
It is, you just had to deal with the road, the road.
Okay. So, we have a motion to accept the minutes of the December 5th meeting?
Yes, so moved.
You want to rock papers scissors?
I'll second it.
Any further comment, any errors or omissions? See no errors or omissions, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have an invoice from Civil Construction Management dated December 22nd for engineering services for stormwater-related changes reviewed, reviewed in the amount of $525. Any objection to assigning that? And I think that's everything on my list.
I have one thing I have to bring up. Yes, and I'm going to use my microphone to do it. Thank you, Robin. You have become the microphone police. At Benevento, the asphalt plant down off of Door Road, that we have, we did a site plan review of two years ago, I think, because they did a renovation that increased the size of the operation. No, but-
In height of its next-
Right, and made it more efficient. But they also built a small lab for testing of the materials that's required for NHDOT and MassDOT. MassDOT now won't let them use the testing facility for New Hampshire DOT. So they would like to add to their small lab by about 500 square feet. There is no change in impervious surface, because the structure's already on the asphalt that exists there, so there's no, there's no change in that. It is an addition of about 500 square feet. I'm hoping that, since this doesn't constitute a change of use, and it doesn't constitute a change to the site drainage in any way, that the board could just approve, for the sake of them needing to do a building permit, this additional space for what is a mirror inspection area to what NHDOT requires, so that they can sell asphalt to both NHDOT and MassDOT.
Yeah, I'll move that we consider that a natural expansion. Rather than advise the building inspector that it's a part of the site plan.
Second.
Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any else coming for the board?
Well, another interview on Thursday. And I did, actually I do have something I want the board, the board would receive a copy of the draft ballot. I have pared these down as much as I can, and it's still four and a half pages long. Feel free to take a look if you think there's something that can be pared down more.
I think from going to 27 to 4 is pretty good.
I, I mean, we're, we're deleting, but it's still going to be, it's going to be a long ballot.
Yeah, I mean, and listen, you know me, I wouldn't touch on the hot stove of social media, and I, somebody was like, towns are obviously not paying attention to their constituents, you're wasting your time with zoning articles when you should be lowering your taxes, and I had to explain that the elected officials on the planning board is their actual job and duty to review zoning warrant articles, and come up with changes and proposals that need to meet the needs of the town.
Irrelevant. So, I have given this to the select board's administrative assistant, and it is draft, because we haven't voted on anything yet until tonight, but this incorporates everything that we voted on tonight. So, I know they want to have it. If you see something that you want to see changed, we probably have a week to make changes, but they're going to want to go to press pretty soon, so...
So, one of the things I did was I took a stab at two things today. First, took a stab at a letter to the editor, and for Facebook purposes, for the warrant article that's being put in for the land use administrator. And I did a second letter, and I was hoping with that one that Peter and I would also collaborate on that, so it would be supported by both zoning board and the planning board. Obviously, they're not going to go out until at least mid-February at the earliest, so we have time to look it over, like, I'm hoping with more input from Robin, and input from Peter on that one, that we'll have it here at the next meeting, which will give you, well before the next meeting, so you have a chance to look it over and make some comments. Also, a second letter, and actually, I got down to less than one page of all the zoning ordinances, combining several together, with just a paragraph explanation about the campground, about the flood, about the commercial zone changing to conditional use permits from zoning board's special exception. Just one paragraph on each, one on the ADU, that sort of thing. So it was really, it didn't, it did not fill an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sheet of paper. So there we can also complete that, let, make that available to you as well. I think anything that goes out from the planning board, everybody should see before it goes out, so that we're all in agreement, agreement. Specifically because in each letter, I said that the planning board was unanimously approved what we were talking about.
What?
Doesn't need to be posted, no. It just needs, it just needs to be discussed, because it's just a letter to the editor.
When you say, not the articles were not all unanimously approved, but the-
The letter.
The letter, yes, yeah, that's good, yeah, because they were-
The, the letter is the explanation of the warrant articles.
Right.
It, I did, I don't believe I had any bias or anything in there, but again, check it for bias, make sure there's no bias, or anything else, just fact about what they are, in a simplified format. And I think I started the letter with something that said to the effect of, you know, "This year, we have more zoning articles than we've ever had. We know they can be complicated and wordy. We want to make sure that you understood everything that was there." It's even something we could hand out at the polls.
Yeah, we usually, I think we usually end up having to post it on a board at the polls, and then we have some handouts available. And the, the key is, like, get all the language out there, just on social media, and post it on the town website, so they, they don't have to go looking for it, it's good.
Exactly.
They can just see the sample ballot that has everything written out there.
Because it's going to be a long one, we want to make sure.
It is indeed.
And I, and I, and I sort of said that this was a perfect storm.
And we can't use three-point font on the ballot, I think. Using microscopes.
And quite honestly, it's, you really have two camps of people when it comes to the zoning articles. Those that read it before they get to the polls, and those that don't read it at all, and just get the "I voted" sticker.
I think part of that is, you know, I said it was, it was a perfect storm, with change in federal regulations, state regulations, and, and, and to enable us to comply with that, some housekeeping measures, to make it easier for people to find things within the ordinances, and...
And I, because I also, I probably had, I had two people ask me questions at the polls. I said, "Hey, is there anyone that can talk to me just about zoning articles?" And so, I came out and I said, "Hey, listen," I go, "If, if any of this comes across personal opinion, I'll try not to, I'll just try to state what the discussions were," but I went through, like, several of them, but it was two people.
Yeah. But I just, I just think that more we can educate people before they get there.
Yeah, we get it out there that we endorse all these too.
Well, that says what, says, says on the ballot.
Yes, it says, proposed by the, and my wife asks, "What am I voting?" And I say, "Yes." If one says it's, it's proposed by the plan.
If you hadn't, it wouldn't be on the ballot.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
And there were, and there were no warrant articles, but-
Well, and that's why I'm, this petition.
Yeah, no-
The tough thing is that the zoning board, the zoning articles never do, they never do a count.
It, there's no count, it just says either recommended or not recommended. Which, I've always had an issue with that, they don't put the count, but they keep telling me they're not allowed to, and I disagree with that still.
So there we are. Okay. So I will get back to you as soon as we've got it a little bit better drafted, to make sure that we've got everybody's comments, and we're all on the same page. Anything else? I declare the meeting adjourned.